Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee Meeting. Tonight is Tuesday, June 23, 2015. Please join the school committee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, unreguiled, in this vote of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. Congdon?
Present.
Mr. Levo?
Present.
Dr. Page?
Present.
Mrs. Donovan?
Excused.
Mrs. Quinney?
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Present.
Six present, one excused. Five present, sorry, one excused.
Thank you very much. Now's the time on the agenda for public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this evening? Anybody? Good evening.
Are we operating?
Yep.
Is it working?
Just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ray Kosinski. I live at 69 Highland Street in Southbridge. All four of my daughters are graduates of the Southbridge School System. I'm also the proud father of this school committee chair, my daughter Lauren. I want to publicly thank all the members of the school committee for their service in these unpaid volunteer elected positions. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort to be an effective member of a school Two of you sitting here, one who was excused and one who resigned and are not seeking reelection. Your goal in coming into this position was to try to move the system to have a better performance and better outcomes overall. We like to say that it's all about the kids and kids are the future of America, yet when you look at how Southbridge operates, and I've been here for quite a while, it almost seems the system is designed for the adults. Is the critical thing the job, money, good benefits, good security, protections, pensions? Is it power? Is it status? Is it relationships, influence, and position? Quite frankly, for the adults in the school system, a position in the school system at a professional level is a ticket to the middle class. Some of you people rocked the boat. You came in insisting on accountability. You became the targets. Welcome to Southbridge blood politics. As a reward, many of you, some of you have been subject to threats, intimidation, anonymous ridicule, adult bullying, false planted information by others, defamation, being lied to and being lied about. Small wonder, you folks aren't eager for more. No one in public or private life deserves this. As you people are leaving this public arena, I wish each of you the warm comfort and support of your children, of your families and friends, those who know your true good character and your good actions. Keep them close. I also urge the remaining members of the school committee to be weary of becoming pawns in the selfish agenda of others. I also challenge this $24 million system, I like to refer to as a $24 million business, to see the kids as the primary customer, not the adults. I also challenge the Southbridge community and the school committee to respond to and adapt to the ever-changing face of Southbridge with its significant Hispanic and other smaller minority populations and the poor families in this town that have kids who are the attendees in our school system and people who are close to being poor. That is the demographic of our school system. It is schooling for these people that can be the key and hope for a better life. Isn't that true in the way it happened for most of us here? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the school committee this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on with the agenda. Next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Tonight, we're approving meeting minutes of May 27, 2015, regular; June 1, 2015, Committee of the Whole; June 2, 2015, regular continuation of May 27; June 9, 2015, regular; and June 8, 2015, Committee of the Whole. Is there any item to be removed from tonight's consent agenda? Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to remove under Consent Agenda, meeting minutes numbers 1, 4, and 5 and place them under Agenda Item Number 8, School Committee Actions.
Okay. Are there any other items to be removed from the consent agenda this evening? Seeing none, the remainder of the items on the consent agenda are the June 1 Committee of the Whole meeting minutes and the June 2 regular continuation of May 27 meeting minutes. Seeing no objection, those items are hereby approved by the school committee. The rest will be moved to School Committee Actions. Under Chairperson's announcements, I just want to say that at the last school committee meeting, Brent Abrahamson resigned his position on the school committee. So I would like to read a memo that the town clerk prepared for the town manager relative to this resignation. Attached, Dear Mr. Pakos, attached is a copy of the resignation letter from school committee member Brent Abrahamson, which was received Wednesday, June 10, 2015, in the town clerk's office. Mr. Abrahamson has resigned his position effective immediately. Mr. Abrahamson's term was to expire in June 2017. According to the Southbridge Home Rule Charter, Chapter 3, Section 321, vacancies and elected town boards established under this charter shall be filled by the town council in joint convention with the remaining members of the respective board within 60 days unless a regular town election shall occur within 120 days, but only until the next town election. Seeing the resignation is within the 120 days mentioned above, the process of obtaining nomination papers has passed and ballots have been printed, so we will not be able to add a third position for school committee to this election. There will be a need for an appointment of a school committee member to fill the unexpired term during a joint meeting of the town council and school committee. The position will be placed on the ballot in June 2016 election for a one-year term to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Abrahamson. If you have any questions, do not hesitate to contact me. So I just wanted to let the public know that that's going to be the process for filling Mr. Abrahamson's term. The school committee that takes effect July 1 will be able to schedule a meeting with the town council and select that member. Okay. That's all I had there. We're moving on to presentations. We have a presentation from Ashley Caprera this evening, the athletic director. This is regarding a request for some new athletic positions. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to formally request changes which will provide for the current needs of SMHS Athletics. This is a process that began months ago, which we are hoping to resolve tonight so that we can begin the fall coaching hiring process as soon as possible. The specific requests of changes are as follows: additions of positions, including one girls' varsity volleyball coach and two middle school football coaches. We are requesting middle school football in lieu of freshman football, as well as girls' varsity volleyball in the place of varsity field hockey. One more change which will affect the winter sports would be renaming the indoor track assistant coach position to girls' indoor track coach. Although indoor track is a program which operates together through travel and practice, each gender participates and competes separately and needs to have a designated coach. Currently, there are no requests anticipated for changes needed for the spring sports. I would also like to thank each of you who have been able to attend SMHS athletic events this year, as our student athletes thrive on the support. If there are any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have questions for Ms. Caprera? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you. Through you to Ms. Caprera. What would be the anticipated cost of adding a varsity team and changing from freshman football to middle school football?
This was all proposed in the budget, which was a line item budget put forth by myself through Principal Earls to Mr. Osborne and all of you earlier, so it would simply take the place of that.
I... We don't have that before us tonight, and that line item budget has been changed several times. Do you have an estimate as to what that would cost?
Instead of hiring a freshman football coach, we would be hiring the middle school football coaching. The uniforms and equipment that were used at the freshman level, most would be able to be used at the middle school level, and then the additional changes for some smaller helmets were put forth in that budget request.
So addition of uniforms?
No, there's no addition to uniforms. They are the same uniforms of the freshman football team that we've currently had, and they would be used at the middle school level.
I thought you just said some of them would be able to?
The helmets. We would need to purchase some smaller size helmets. That's anticipated, and those were included in the budget proposal.
What about transportation?
Those again were, it's the same, instead of having a freshman team, which unfortunately our freshman football team was only able to participate in two games because a lot of schools are having difficulty fielding those teams, and we do have a lot of middle school players who participated on the freshman team, so for safety and so that they get an entire season's worth of experience, the middle school teams, which other schools in Massachusetts, Central Mass, specifically Southern Worcester County League, which we are a part of, have created middle school teams to allow for that developmental level to begin.
So would they need separate transportation? I would assume that the freshman team plays the same with the varsity?
No, freshman is a separate league. JV is a separate game schedule. Varsity is a separate. So instead of freshman, middle school would be the replacement for that. Freshmen would be absorbed through the JV and varsity level programs.
So how many games would you anticipate if we've only fielded two games this year?
They're scheduled to have a nine-season game, just like a freshman would, but last year due to teams having low numbers and it becoming a safety issue with just freshmen, they were only able to participate in two games. So instead of having students not get the full experience of a full season, middle school would allow for that opportunity.
Thank you. And regarding volleyball, do we have enough skilled players to field a girls' varsity team?
We do. We had sign-ups yesterday, and we were able to have over 30 girls sign up for the varsity program. The JV program took off last year with a lot of upperclassmen students playing on it and succeeding. They came a long way with a winning record, and they have been working very well and hard throughout the year in preparation to have two teams and grow the program. It's providing for a great opportunity for mentorship, the girls who have the experience to bring new student athletes on board. They're very eager to participate in the games, and they have shown excitement all year for it.
My concern with the varsity team is we've just started a JV team, and the level of skill that's required for the varsity, there's different positions that are available, and my understanding, and having attended one and watching, is that at the varsity level there are more positions you have to overhand serve. I know that a lot of our girls couldn't overhand serve, so my concern is do we have six to 12 girls that can participate at that level and have the basic skills that exceed that of the JV team moving forward?
Yes, I do anticipate that.
And have you discussed this with the volleyball coach from last year?
We're not able to hire because I haven't been able to post these positions.
From last year, I said.
Last year, at the JV level, we saw tremendous growth, and I was able to speak with her, and we're looking forward to moving forward.
Thank you. That is all.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
May again. What would be the additional cost to the district of having a varsity volleyball team?
Again, it's the same as football. Instead of having a full budgeted field hockey season with buses, it's the same amount of games, so instead of those costs going to a team where we did not have interest in looking at the interests of our current population of student athletes, volleyball at that level would absorb those costs, and it would be the same estimated costs.
So we'd need, but we would need new uniforms and such?
Those have already been purchased. Those were in this year's purchases, so there are uniforms available and equipment.
Thank you. I'm really done now.
All set?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're all set. We're moving on to school committee reports. A report of the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Dr. Page?
Yes, there's no report tonight and not currently a meeting scheduled, but we do have minutes to approve from the June 1 Budget Finance Committee meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Some move.
Second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Only the Subcommittee's voting on these minutes. That looks a little strange. It's approved. Congratulations.
That's all. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Negotiation Subcommittee, anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Today, Local SEIU, Local 888 ratified our MOA, which we will be discussing later tonight. That is all.
Thank you. For Policy Subcommittee, it's the same deal. We have some minutes to approve from our meeting of May 4, 2015. This would be a vote of the Subcommittee only, so I would entertain that motion. Some move.
Second?
Motion by Mrs. Congdon, seconded by Dr. Page. Show of hands, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We're good there. Report of the Finance Director, end of the year budget report. Mr. Osborne?
Yes, the agenda calls for an end of year budget report. The year has not quite ended yet. So what you have before you is a one week before the end of the year budget report, with a number of things that happen in the last week and the first couple weeks of the new year to tie things out. So there is still work to be done. What you have before you is what has hit the books to date. There will be some salaries that are already encumbered that will hit the books, so those encumbrances will move to expended. It won't really change a whole lot of the bottom line number. There will be some additional estimates for things like electricity, some bills coming up for the month of June that we will encumber into the system prior to July 1. And then we will begin disencumbering some items. There are some items that will disencumber, so we'll be adding a little money on, we'll be taking a little money off, and we will be then supplementing with things like circuit breaker, which you can see on the front sheet. If you look at the cover sheet in red, we have been holding on to some circuit breaker money that is set to offset some of those out-of-district and high costs, special ed costs. We also have sort of three major revolving funds that have been used in the past to balance the budget. We are hanging on to those at the moment and just trying to see where things play out before we dip into those. For example, the facilities budget, we are still contemplating the potential of moving or looking at our living arrangements, and that facilities revolving fund could be used to offset some of those costs if we have some relocation costs. Those would be eligible. We're also looking at that preschool revolving account to see what happens with grants. Next year, we have the potential of losing some significant kindergarten and pre-K grant money that's still pending, so we'd like to hang on to as much of that as possible. I think I spoke earlier about sort of creating a cascading system of funding sources. In this list, circuit breaker would be one of the first pots that we draw from to balance the budget, with that being the least flexible of these funding sources. And then we would look at drawing from potentially facilities first, probably the preschool tuition and then school choice, and based on appropriate use of the funds as well. So facilities really can only be used for facilities uses. We could use that to pay off energy, some of our custodial and maintenance staff, which has been what has been paid in the past. This year, again, I'm just kind of hanging on to that to see where things play out so that we can hang on to as much of that as we can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions? Dr. Page?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the Finance Director. So what is your projection for a timeline to have in the closeout done on the fiscal year? Is it sometime at the end of?
Closeout would be end of July.
End of July.
Before everything, you know, ties out and we can pull something that's really meaningful.
Okay.
And then we, you know, we'd look for you folks to approve, you know, the final budget amount.
Line item transfers and so forth that are necessary.
Yeah, yeah. And, yeah, exactly, and you could, the school committee would be able to do that in sort of one fell swoop.
Yep.
It wouldn't have to be a, we try to do those on an ongoing basis throughout the year to keep things level. Once we get to the end of the year, there's a reality that there will be a number of small items, a little bit over, a little bit under, where we will sort of approve those in all one fell swoop.
Thank you.
Fair enough.
Any other questions for Mr. Osborne? No? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now for the Superintendent's report. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to first say thank you to all of our school faculty and staff for their tireless efforts this year. Today was our last day of school for students. I had the opportunity to visit all of the schools, to wish everyone a happy last day and a safe summer. Our work over the summer will continue with custodial and maintenance crews getting to work on cleaning and repairing our buildings and fields. Our teachers will be participating in curriculum-writing work groups and professional development opportunities. Our teachers and EAs will also be working in our credit recovery and summer school programs. Our ILT, IRSs, and administrators are already hard at work revising the AIP and planning our professional development for the upcoming school year. We have early indications that our access scores for our ELL students have shown improvement. Our safety meetings have included representatives from the police and fire departments, and we are working on implementing a new joint crisis response protocol. I meant what I said when I visited schools today. I am very excited about our work next year. We have many things to look forward to. Our new AIP is strong collaborative document that will guide our work. Our strategic objectives and initiatives have been developed by a broad base of staff and have already been shared with the faculty to gather feedback. The planned activities in the AIP are aligned with our daily practices and ensure that our implementation of the AIP is not an exercise in compliance, but rather a reflection of the work we do in classrooms every day with our students. I would like to take the time to remind the committee of some of the accomplishments we have made this year. We have adopted the Reach for Reading Program, K-5. We have adopted the OWL Curriculum, which is a pre-K literacy program. We have a final adoption of the math curriculum, K-12. We have a curriculum committee working currently for science. We have written and completed the K-12 ELL curriculum. We have ratified the SEA contract. We have also ratified the SEIU contract. We have added the DDM contract language to the contract for the SEA. We have assessed our data system and developed a plan to move forward with MAP testing, K-12. We have established superintendent and assistant superintendent weekly school visit protocol and calendar. We have fully implemented the teacher evaluation system. We are currently reviewing and revising the Southbridge Learning Walk Protocol, which is linked to our Southbridge standard. We have developed and implemented ELL and special education improvement plans. As I mentioned, we established the district's safety meetings with police, fire, and building principals, and these are to ensure safety and security in our buildings. I want to be clear that we have reduced unemployment this year by 50%. We have no new litigation or arbitration as of January. As I said, there are many reasons for us to look forward to next year, but most importantly, it is to continue the work that supports teachers in their efforts at providing the highest quality education to our students and supports for our families. I would like to say to our students, have a happy summer vacation, stay safe, and make sure you read, you do your summer reading and math activities. Your teachers will be looking for them in August, the 26th. I would like to remind students that learning is everywhere around you, and being a scholar never ends. I would also like to take a moment to thank school committee members who will be leaving. It has been my pleasure to work with Mr. Abrahamson, Mrs. Donovan, and Chairwoman McLaughlin. You have been dedicated, and your hearts and souls have been in the right place. At this time, I would like to say thank you to Elsie Garcia for her work and her volunteer hours at Eastford Road School, and I would like to read a letter. It says, "Dear Miss Former, Allegro Microsystems LLC is pleased that one of our employees, Elsie Garcia, volunteers at Eastford Road School, kindergarten, and recognizes what an important role this is. With this in mind, we are happy to enclose a check for $250 recognizing our employees' volunteer hours with you. Sincerely, Judy Harrington, Human Resource Representative." So a very proud thank you to Elsie Garcia for her work at Eastford Road School. And that is all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're moving on to school committee actions. The first would be a vote to declare weight room equipment at Colav as surplus as outlined in the memorandum from the Supervisor of Maintenance and Facilities. For the public's knowledge, we received a memorandum from the Supervisor of Maintenance that indicates that when the district moved to the new middle high school, there was weight room equipment, which was purchased through the building construction budget, so the items of equipment stored at Colav are no longer needed or used by the athletic department and can be declared surplus. And they included a list of equipment. So our job here would be to declare those items surplus and offer them up for use through the town. So is there a motion?
Some move.
Dr. Page makes a motion. Thank you. Is there a second? Second? Seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Is there any discussion? Mr. Levo?
I know, through you, Madam Chair, I know that this is, just to prove this as surplus, is there any idea what they plan on doing with this equipment?
That I do not know. That would be a question.
No, it would be declared by the town, so they would use their process to either donate or auction.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just remember last year that we approved in the warrant the purchase of some items, such as dumbbells for the school, so I would ask that in moving forward, that we assess what we have in the district before we purchase new things, because now we're donating them, and we could have used them last year. So that is all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is the vote to declare the weight room equipment at Colav as surplus as outlined in the memorandum from the Supervisor of Maintenance. By show of hands, please. It's unanimous. Thank you very much. Also, under School Committee Actions, we moved approval of some school committee minutes. Do we want to take them one at a time? Would you like to do that, or have?
One at a time, please.
Okay. So the May 27, 2015 school committee minutes. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a correction in the name under others in attendance, Mr. Nick Bilis, just his name is B-I-L-L-I-S. And on number six presentations, his name was misspelled again. It should be B-I-L-L-I-S. As well as, there were some questions, the first paragraph his name, as well as the second paragraph in presentations. That is all.
Thank you for that. Is there any other changes to the May 27 minutes? Seeing none, we could have a vote to approve those minutes pending those changes. Is there a motion to do that? Some move. Mrs. Congdon makes a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Levo. Any other discussion? All those in favor, by show of hands, please. Thank you. It's unanimous. Moving on to the minutes of, you want to do June 8?
Um, June 9.
Or 9? June 9? Okay. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just under Agenda Item Number 11, Member Forum, first paragraph, last sentence, it should read, strike the word "different" and add "differents." That was the only change.
Are there any other changes to the June 9 minutes? Seeing none, no further discussion? Can we have, we have a, sorry?
Vote to approve the minutes of the June 9 minutes.
Vote to approve the minutes. Some move. Thank you very much. Uh, all in favor? Show of hands, please.
Have you ever seen?
What? Was there a second?
No.
Oh, I'm, I apologize.
Second.
Show of hands now. Thank you very much. Mr. Levo is abstaining from those. So what was four? And one abstention. And now the June 8th minutes. I'm sorry, Mrs. Congdon.
Thank you, sorry. Um, just under page three, um, under Mrs. Congdon, the third sentence, it says, "Be in favor, um, strike the word 'make that full-time position' and it should read, um, to keep that position."
Are there any other changes there to those minutes? Seeing none. Is there a second to? Is that a motion?
Some moved to accept the June 8th minute.
Yeah. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Show of hands, please, for the June 8th minutes.
I wasn't there.
We've got three. Okay. Two abstentions, Dr. Page and Mr. Levo. Motion carries. Thank you. Under unfinished business, the FY 16 budget, if there are any updates or anything we need to know about, any?
Um, we have, uh, modified the 16 budget to match the town budget. You have it before you in blue. Um, there were some small changes to, um, positions, consolidating some positions, moving some positions. But I think the last update we gave you actually had a small surplus, and we have just ironed that surplus throughout, um, a few items. There were some salary items. Um, we've also put in, uh, Niasq, um, uh, and, and that should be about it. There was a very, I think it was $30,000 surplus in the last budget that you saw, and this just smoothes that out to an even. Um, we hadn't, we hadn't budgeted for Niasq yet. We hadn't budgeted for superintendent search, superintendent searches in this budget. Um, you will see, actually, the page two, you will see $20,000 was added to school committee advertising central office. So that's one of those moves.
Thank you for that. Are there any questions for Mr. Osborne? Dr. Page?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I believe that we have to vote to approve these transfers. Since the budget was adopted, it was a line item budget. And now you're changing some line items, and I believe it would probably require a school committee vote in order to approve that.
Sure.
Um, and do you have a summary of exactly which ones were changed?
Those were the, we had, the prior meeting, we gave a list of positional moves, um, that was, uh, in a memorandum. Um, I don't have that with me at the moment.
Okay.
That would, that brought us to the, um, small surplus. We have, we have simply smoothed that small surplus out into, I, I believe it's predominantly, um, superintendent search and Niasq. Those are the only two line items that, that would have been added since that.
Okay.
That memo.
Okay. I think, um, so what my recommendation, I guess, would be?
I believe the school committee voted on that memo to adopt those changes at the time, um, and now we're just dealing with the small surplus that that created.
Okay. I still think just a matter of procedure, probably add up the next school committee meeting. It'll be, obviously, a new school committee. We should probably get a summary of exactly what those were and, and, and vote them just to make sure that we're covered, um, for that.
Okay. We'll just bring that back and put the items in.
Any other questions for Mr. Osborne? Seeing none, under new business, the next school committee meeting date and location will be determined by the next school committee. Um, so now we have member forum. Anybody would like to speak or, I'm sorry?
Sorry, just a point of clarification. Do we need to, um, make a motion to vote to approve those athletic positions?
Um, that comes up later because it's a collective bargaining.
Okay.
Issue. And we're going to be discussing that in executive session.
Perfect.
So, member forum, anybody have? I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Levo.
Um, I just want to thank, um, Ms. McLaughlin and, uh, Ms. Donovan for all your hard work, uh, serving on the school committee. It has been a pleasure serving with you two. Um, I wish you well on your future endeavors and, uh, look forward to seeing you around town. I would also like to congratulate the students and the staff for a great year. I hope that you all enjoy your summer and show up ready, uh, to work and get back into it the next school year.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wanted to thank, um, you and Mrs. Donovan for your three years of dedicated service to the school committee and to the community, um, but most of all to the students of Southbridge and, um, your efforts to, um, make an impact for them. I also wanted to thank, um, the staff and teachers for this year and thank them for all of our hard work and effort that they put forward in making the year all that it was for the students in their classrooms, as well as the administration. There are a bunch of things going on this summer. Um, there's summer reading program. I know all the elementary students actually got books as well as their math, um, program for the summer. The Jacob Edwards Library has a lot of, uh, summer reading program as well as a summer feeding program that I would encourage people to take advantage of, as well as the rec department is running a program at West Street School, which will also have, um, the summer feeding program there. So there's a lot going on, um, in town over the summer, and I would say to all the students and families to be safe and look forward to seeing you back at school in August. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Page?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I would like to say, you know, happy end of the year to all the students that had their last day today. And, uh, and again, I would like to echo a comment the superintendent made as well, is that learning is indeed an everyday event. And to the students out there going through the summer, whatever you're doing, always take opportunities to learn new things and, and getting involved into new endeavors. I would also like to extend my thanks to, uh, Chairwoman, uh, McLaughlin and Kara, who's not here, Ms. Donovan. Um, it, it, it has been my pleasure to, to serve with you on the school committee this year, and, um, I, I wish you all the best for the future.
Thank you, Madam. Appreciate it. Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I too wanted to echo and thank, um, Mrs. McLaughlin as well as Mrs. Donovan for your three years of service to the school district and the children of our community. I know at times, um, it wasn't easy and you took a lot of abuse from the community. We had some real memorable times going to the conventions and learning a lot. Um, I enjoyed working with you both. Even though we disagreed on certain things, we always had good conversations, um, and that were respectful conversations. And you were always very supportive to me, you and Mrs. Donovan in my first year as a school, new school committee member, and I appreciate that. So thank you for all of your years of service to the community and, um, trying to make a difference.
Thank you.
My, um, second point I just wanted to make was to thank all of the staff at all of our schools and the families for trusting us, um, with your children and the staff for your dedicated, um, year of service this year. I know it hasn't been easy with all of the turmoil in our district. To families that are leaving, I'm sorry, I've heard of a lot of families that are leaving the district. I'm sorry that you've lost trust. I hope that someday, um, that these families can regain trust in our district and maybe move back. And families that are still staying in the district, that still continue to trust the school, um, system, kudos to you. Um, I hope that we can do things right in the future for everyone in this community and make this a great town for people to be able to stay here and to educate all the children of our community, because that's what it's all about. I hope that we can work together on this along with the town council and, um, everyone can collaborate and become a team. The other point I just wanted to make was, at some point, I would just like an update on our transportation. I know that I continue to say that because our contract was up. So at some point, as a school committee member, I would like an update on that, as well as a current update on the moving out of Colav. I just haven't received anything to date, so, just for future. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
That concludes it. Thank you.
So I, um, would like to say that I had the opportunity to attend some end-of-the-year events at some of our schools, and, um, I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in pulling those events together. Unfortunately, Charlton Street was one school I did not get to, um, due to scheduling conflicts, but I heard that, um, your events went very well as well. So I appreciate that. I know that takes a lot of effort to do that. And, um, honestly, if you could have seen the preschoolers doing the chicken dance, uh, at Eastford Road School, I wish we had a video of it. It was priceless. So I'd like to thank, uh, I'd like to wish all the students and staff a very happy summer and remind everybody to keep reading, um, read, read, read. This is my last member of the Southbridge School Committee, so my term ends officially on June 30th, so between now and then, I'll spend some time tying up some loose ends. I'd like to thank the Southbridge Cable Access for their, um, shout out to them for their, uh, work and dedication through the, uh, through the last three years. You have been very professional, and I thank you all for your efforts. I want to thank those in the community who have supported, uh, my efforts during the last three years, those who voted for me, those who supported me, and especially those who have approached me recently with very kind words. I do sincerely appreciate it. I'm the first to admit, it's not been an easy ride. Uh, when someone recently made the comment that the view from the road does not look very good, I wanted to scream and shout. You should see what it's like from inside the car. Um, I'm going to save my war stories for a later day, but I would like to take this opportunity to thank all those in the district who genuinely work to support and educate our students. Your work absolutely makes a difference. Uh, you may not feel like it does, but I'm here to tell you that it absolutely does. To my fellow school committee members, uh, those of you who remain, who are still here, um, I wish you all the best of luck. I know, uh, as you all do, that serving on this committee takes a great deal of time and effort and commitment, especially when you have, uh, younger children, and so I thank you for your service. Um, and even though Mrs. Donovan is not here this evening, I would like to thank Kara and her entire family for the tremendous personal sacrifices they've made during the last three years, um, to the Donovan and Kokoska families. I will tell you what you already know, that your wife, mother, and daughter is a truly exceptional human being. We were lucky to have her, and thanks for sharing her. Um, I would also like to thank my own family. If I had known three years ago how crazy some people would have been towards you, I swear to God, I never would have subjected you to it. But thank you for, um, being in my corner every step of the way, for making me laugh. John, you're an incredible gift to me. I thank you very much for your support. And, um, I'm sorry, I know I shouldn't cry. The debates, they said they don't want any more criers, so, um. Maggie and Katie, you are amazing kids. Amazing, astounding, exceptional human beings. I know very bright days are ahead for all of us. I look forward to that. To Mom and Dad, Dad, you really surprised me tonight. I had no idea. I'm usually shy away from the limelight and all things political, but thank you for coming up here. You are truly the greatest parents in the world. Uh, my parents, for people who don't know, were teenage parents. Uh, by the time they were 21, they had four children, um, still together, still strong. You're an example for all of us. I appreciate that. I appreciate everything that you have done over the years. And indeed, you were right all along. Everything does happen for a reason. And a final thought for my daughters especially, um, these aren't my words, but I want, I want you to listen to them and really take what they mean to heart. People are often unreasonable, irrational, and self-centered. Forgive them anyway. If you are successful, you will win some unfaithful friends and some genuine enemies. Succeed anyway. If you are honest and sincere, people may deceive you. Be honest and sincere anyway. What you spend years creating, others could destroy overnight. Create anyway. If you find serenity and happiness, some may be jealous. Be happy anyway. The good you do today will often be forgotten. Do good anyway. Give the best you have, and it will never be enough. Give your best anyway. In the final analysis, is it between you and your God? It was never between you and them anyway. Sorry. Oh, we still have work to do. Sorry. I apologize. No more tears. Thank you very much. Uh, we're going to be going into executive session, so I would need a motion to go into executive procession pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position. And the chair so declares, I do so declare. Also pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, uh, Section, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. May I have a motion?
Some moved.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Um, roll call, please.
Mr. Levo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
All yes?
Thank you. We will be returning to open session to finish up the agenda. Thank you very much.
The Southbridge School Committee is back from executive session. It's 8:24 PM on Tuesday, June 23rd, 2015. We're returning from executive session to take up only one issue, and that's a vote to ratify the 2014-2017 memorandum of agreement between the Southbridge School Committee and SEIU Local 888. Please note, I'm sorry, please note the presence, I forgot to say, of, um, Mrs. Congdon, Dr. Page, Mr. Levo, myself, Mrs. Quinney, and the superintendent on the dais. Mrs. Quinney's made a motion. So have a second? Seconded by Mr. Levo.